All righty, we will call this work session to order. The first item that's not on the agenda will be the introduction of a new staffer.
Hi, yes, thank you. Kelly Brooks, Assistant City Manager, and I'm jumping up to the front of your agenda to introduce you to Brenna Cruz, our new events coordinator. Brenna is a native of California and has a ton of wonderful events experience. She worked for the California Nursing Association for many years and helped coordinate a lot of their national conferences and a lot of all kinds of crazy logistics related to that effort. She also helped organize the San Francisco Marathon. Was there another big race that you did down there?
The Berkeley Half.
Oh, the Berkeley Half, so a lot of really wonderful route logistic and management experience, which I think is going to be really helpful to us with Carefree Sunday in particular. She's also just a really nice person. I really enjoy getting to know her, and she has a lot of great experience with volunteer management and some of the software options that we've been looking into for the city. So, really excited to have her here. This was facilitated in large part due to the council's engagement goal to help add some more resource and capacity to our team so that we can continue to reach more people and provide good spaces for our community to gather and engage with the work that we do. So, thank you for your support there, and Brenna, do you want to add anything?
I'm just grateful for the opportunity, so thank you for allowing me to have this.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome. Look forward to working with you.
Me as well. And that's all for today.
All right, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
All right. Now, onto the regularly scheduled meeting. We have the Milwaukee Station Food Cart Pod, our annual update, which will be presented by Leila Aman, and joining her will be Richard Johnson from the Food Cart Pod. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Were you asking me or Richard?
Both of you.
Okay.
I haven't seen either of you in about the same amount of time.
Okay. Well, Leila Aman, you're Community Development Director and joined tonight with Richard Johnson from Johnson Group. Richard's team manages our Food Cart Pod, so I'm here to give you the annual update. I'm going to go through the slides, and then we'll be available for any questions that you might have. So, as you know, the Milwaukee Station Food Cart Pod, we've maintained about 10 food cart pod spaces since its opening. Those that are there currently are listed here, and I believe, Richard, seven of the originals still remain on the site. There's capacity for 12, and we're hoping that as the season starts to get a little brighter, that we'll get some more interest and get some additional carts on site. 2019 in review, so it was a challenging year, I think, for the food cart pods due to the construction in South Downtown, though the construction workers did provide a bit of a boost during the lunchtime hour, which I think was really helpful to the businesses that were there. Students tend to continue to be the main clientele, primarily for more lower-cost items, again during the lunch hour, so the school year has also been a helpful boon to business. One of the other things that arose during the last year is the proposed changes from the Oregon Health Authority on gray water. Right now, it's stored, we have an auxiliary tank. That's been extended until 2023, I believe, so we're glad to hear that that was rescinded. I think some folks maybe provided some letters of support to the Oregon Health Authority to help make that happen. There have been some ongoing issues, graffiti and loitering. We've been working with the police department to provide some additional patrols as they can. Richard's in contact with them as well, so we're hoping that those additional patrols will help with that. I think also with the warmer weather coming and more activity down there, that will also contribute to a more welcoming environment. Some new things that have happened, too, I think Richard met with a group of business owners to find some other ways to help activate the space, so they have games now. The city provided new gravel just a couple of months ago, just part of our contract. Richard's been repainting the tables. There's been issues again with graffiti, went in, I think, painted in February or January or something. And then there was a relocation of the oil recycling bin as well, so hoping to address some of the major issues that were addressed by the food cart owners. As we look forward to 2020, they've been doing some proactive marketing, so provided gift certificates to the new tenants and Axle Tree. I think we're hoping to see as that lease is up that we get, again, more activity down there. I think the opening of Cronberg, the plaza completion of construction, just hoping to get more people down into South Downtown. So, if you're watching and you're out there, go to the Food Cart Pods, hang out in the plaza when it's closed, the street is closed, not during when it's not. That would be dangerous.
I was going to go set up a lounge chair. It's out in the middle.
It's a lounge, it's an ADA crosswalk otherwise. And then I think we're looking forward to when the market, when they move, helping to provide a little bit more activity down there as well. And then I think there's still summer music events planned, and then the anniversary party. These are photos from last year's anniversary party. Just an update, too, on the lease. Last time we were here was actually to renew the lease, which expires August of 2021, so next August. But if you recall, we added an additional provision in there that the city can exercise at its discretion, an additional extension to August, that should say 4th of 2022. And in talking with Richard, I think if they maintain the minimum number of carts that they need there, which is eight, that there would be interest in doing that. So, we'll likely, we'll work with Richard on that, and then as we get closer to that date, we'll execute that. We have to do that by November 4th. So, that would keep the Food Cart Pod in operation until 2022. So, with that, we're happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
So, looking forward to the day when gray water can no longer be stored in tanks, what's, what would, what would it take to actually create a tap to sewer, sort of like a trailer park does, you know, where they have the systems that just...
Yeah, it'll be a little difficult now because, you know, we already trenched the whole area and had that all opened up and everything, so we could possibly do it with, you know, a dump site instead of having every, like a trailer park, each, you know, unit, mobile unit would have its own little dump site right there so they could connect right, a hose right to it. So, we'd probably have to connect just one, you know, maybe over by the ATM or something in a place where we could trench, and then they could take and, you know, dump the gray water there onsite, but then it would go through a grease interceptor and into the sewer. But we'd have to study that and figure out what the best, you know, best way to be, but, you know, that's January of 2023 that that takes effect, and that's a DEQ rule statewide, so unless they decide to extend that further, grandfather for existing food cart pods, then we'd be looking at something like that.
Is this standard thing? I mean, do a lot of food cart pods have this issue, or do they have an ability to...
A lot of them do have the issue, because any time you see those cubes, you know, those white plastic cubes inside the cages at a food cart pod, then that's what they're doing, they're storing, like the downtown ones all had that, you know, and that's an auxiliary tank, because they have a tank on their cart that's 30, 35 gallons, but that's about one day's worth of usage, so, you know, they'd have to have somebody come and dump it every day, and some of those carts downtown did that. But, you know, they, these cubes are 250 gallons, so that translates into about once a week having to dump it, so, but they're pretty common around, you know, the metro area here, because it's pretty expensive to put in the infrastructure to go straight to the sewer, you know. You have to, you know, work in the right of way and do a sewer tap if it's not already on the property, and then you have to install a grease interceptor and, you know, run the drain line, so it's a, it's a major undertaking, so a lot of pods, you know, try to avoid that expense.
Well, and isn't the long-term thought about this space that it will eventually be redeveloped and potentially to accommodate a permanent food cart pod, at which point we could...
Could do all the infrastructure.
Or in some kind of affordable commercial, potentially, but I'm not certain. I mean, we haven't had a discussion about what the...
Right.
So, I, I mean, I would, I would, I'd be more inclined to really push the health authority to try to accommodate these sort of temporary uses.
Yeah.
But I think it does also flag this as something we don't want to get caught out not having...
Right. I don't want to have the next conversation a month before their...
The deadline.
Shutting down.
Pretty much anything you'd use that space for in the future, unless it was just a, you know, green space park, you know, would need a sewer connection anyway, so that would be...
Right, right.
I mean, it's unfortunate that it didn't get put in right when all that was torn up, but that's, of course...
Yeah, isn't it?
Well, it was intended to be an interim use, and so I think I would agree that, you know, we have now, assuming Richard extends their lease, we have till August of 2022. We know it's an issue now, and so that would be, I think, a topic for further discussion for council as we get further down the line and have a little bit, you know, I think within a year of that lease expiration, we should probably start initiating a conversation around what is the near-term and long-term goals for that site and have a discussion with you about that, because to create a sewer line connection is not an insignificant thing to do, as Richard described.
And you want to do it once, so let's have the conversation about what the long-term use is and then plan that kind of a capital outlay.
And I think it is possible nowadays, they can, you know, because we had to bore for the water line, you know, from the gravel area of the food cart pod all the way into the sidewalk and to the far side of the street, and then they open that to tap into the water service, the water main. But you can also bore similarly and go up to, I think it's like four inches, which is what a typical sewer line is, and go do the same thing, go under the sidewalk, go into the street, wherever the sewer line is, it might not be as far as the water line, and you would avoid at least opening up the sidewalk and all the street, all of the streets, so that's a possibility.
Just have to be, you just have to be careful making sure that you have the grade.
Right.
You're boring, and sometimes, when you're...
Peter.
Sometimes when you're, sometimes when you're boring, the boring machine can hit obstructions and not keep the grade that it needs to keep, so...
Is a year out enough? I'm trying to think about what sort of certainty we can offer and what sort of certainty food cart pod owners need or the operators need in terms of, are they going to have to find a place? And I don't know enough to phrase the question properly. I guess I'm just wondering, is that enough time?
Is that enough time? We can certainly, I think, start it earlier, I think.
We could look into what it would take to put the sewer tap on, you know, at any time, so at least you know, we know it's involved, and then we've got at least, you know, two years before, you know, we'd have to really start thinking seriously about what would have to happen, you know. We want to give everybody fair notice of, you know, future plans, or if the pod was going to close, so they could, you know, plan accordingly. That's why we changed the date for reviewing the lease and extending it earlier instead of waiting, you know, almost till it was over, just so the car owners could have more planning time.
Yes. If we redevelop, then there would be, and if we were able to fulfill the dream of having some space for food carts in the redeveloped site, then there would need to potentially be a place to relocate them to, or they, we would just start over with our pod tenants? I don't know. It just seems like there's a lot of complicated questions there that maybe it's worth having a conversation with the food cart owners about at some point, just to find out whether or not that's a reasonable amount of lead time. I don't know if you can do that without making them really nervous. That's not my intent.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I think November to August is a pretty good lead time, frankly.
I just don't know enough about how this business works to feel confident in it, that's all.
We could determine in advance what exactly would have to be done, and then therefore determine how long that would take and kind of work backwards, but, you know, I could talk to the DEQ and the Oregon Health Authority and see what the requirement would be, you know, if there could be just like one dump site on the, on the property that people would utilize instead of individual. Because I have another pod in Selwood, and we have just, you know, three sites that everybody connects to, there's not one per cart, so...
And do they have permanent connections to it?
Well, it's not permanent, but they have a garden hose that runs, and it's usually gravity-fed, and it just stays in the RV-style port and, you know, drains as it's used, you know, through the grease interceptor into the sewer, but you can't have a permanent connection on a mobile unit.
No, no, I didn't mean permanent, permanent, but I meant like there's always a hose hooked up to it.
Right, yeah, for all intents and purposes, it's permanent. Functions as permanent.
Yeah. I think we could probably have a discussion at council sooner, just, but we should be thinking strategically long-term as well, so we have an interim use. I think people get attached to an interim use, and we start to thinking about shifting it, so I think, I don't want to presume what this council wants to do, but I think that just keeping in mind, we do need to consider the long-term play, because if we are putting in significant infrastructure to support a temporary use, it could be that where we locate a sewer line for gray water may not be the appropriate place if we end up putting in a permanent structure, and so I'd like to have a little bit more time to think through that in terms of what, what are the questions, because it's not simply just about accommodating the food cart part, but what is the city's vision for that site long-term, and how do we incrementally get ourselves there in a meaningful way?
Yeah. So, on other issues, I stopped by and was talking to one of the cart owners today, and she said the number one issue was kids fighting. You alluded to sort of graffiti and vandalism, but she said it's pretty bad, and that, that she had a kid that she had, used to be a regular customer, and she saw him, and he doesn't even come there anymore because it's been, it's like a deterrent to the good kids So just wanted to put that out there. I hope that we can, you know, the police or some presence can do something about that. One of the other complaints I heard last year was from talking to some of the owners was that they were scrambling for parking. And, and we all know that, you know, we get lots of complaints about the scramble for parking. And I wondered if there was any talk of trying to get, you know, and I guess I'm looking at you, Richard, more than Leila, trying to get an agreement with the building owner that owns Birch or somebody for them to be able to park there rather than having them compete with customers for customer parking, right?
Yeah, that's ideal. Yeah, I talked to both those building owners, the ones that owns like the Bloom area that I think that's owner owns some of those buildings and then the other owner. And the one was not interested in renting any space at all. And the other said he might, might be interested, but then when I followed up with him, he didn't respond. So, and then I also worked with Milwaukee High School because they had some spots on that west side that they said they'd be willing to rent, but they gave us a price and none of the food court owners took them up on it. It was a hundred dollars a month per space, so.
Wow. Yeah, that's, that seems kind of high for downtown Milwaukee. Yeah, well, I just, yeah, that was something, it seemed to me like, yeah, finding a, a solution for all of them as a group might get a volume discount or something.
Yeah, I was hoping the school thing would work out and so, but, you know, that price because the originally where they, the way they worded it, it was going to be like a hundred dollars for, you know, nine spaces a month versus a hundred dollars per space.
Space, yeah.
They added the per space after the fact and it kind of changed the
Oh, wow.
Changed the math on it.
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah.
So is the problem, is this a place where we have a problem that is turnover-related or is it just straight demand? We don't probably know at this point. Do you have any anecdotal evidence on, like, is this a situation where putting in some 30-minute signs instead of two-hour parking would help out? Or is it that people who are coming and wanting to hang out for an hour or more can't find a place to park? I don't really know how the site is used on a day-to-day basis. When I'm there, I see people getting food and leaving. I see Grubhub pickups. I also see people who do what I do, which is hang out there, but I walk.
The typical, you know, people come for lunch, you know, stay for a, you know, typical lunch amount of time. So, you know, the two hours is fine for them, probably plenty of time. But, you know, the problem is with the vendors that have to be there all day from, you know, 9:30, 10:00 in the morning until they close, you know? So that's the problem, you know, the two hour obviously is not, or even the four hour. And I've given them the City of Milwaukee's information about, you know, the parking map and how they can get a permit and where they can park all day in the four-hour spots and stuff.
My sense was the fair number of them are parking in the neighborhood. And then, you know, if they need to go get something from their car, it's sort of too far to leave their business and, you know, and that was just the concern is trying to find someplace close but not taking up that street parking, yeah.
Well, I'll just put a plug in that we do have data from the survey we did two years ago. We're initiating a new survey, so we'll actually have data to look at in terms of what turnover and time stays are in that area. We didn't do it last year, as you know, because of the construction. The other thing is, is in response to some requests to the post office, we resigned or are in the process of resigning a few spaces just outside the post office to 30-minute. But these are things that we can consider as we advance on our parking management plan and implementation and probably getting some representation from the food cart pod. Folks in that parking management group would be helpful. But I also just want to echo too that we do have a employee permit parking system and that that's what it's for. So having food cart pod owners parking in the neighborhoods makes me a little uncomfortable when we have a process for employees to be parking in the downtown. So, and we can also entertain some ideas around the shared parking as well. So I'll be meeting with the high school separately about some other issues related to parking and we can address this at that time.
Great. Sounds good. Getting back to the, the fighting, I mean, I assume that we are working pretty closely with Principal Gellman and is the, is the understanding that, that primarily, you know, high school students are sort of, you know, engaging in some unwanted activity. And also just want to be sure that we're not labeling kids bad kids or good kids because I'm not quite comfortable with that, but.
Officer Nold, who's our SRO, has actually been a critical part of this discussion. And so she's been meeting both with the principal on an ongoing basis and with the chief, just to make sure that we're looking at this through clear eyes. And so she actually was the person who asked us to give them a little bit of room to sit down and talk to the students, so, yes. Okay.
And I've reached out to the principal too, since assistant principal, and so they know, they're aware of the issue and, you know, it's not a certainty that these are even, you know, students. They could be, you know, they look student age, but, you know, there's a, there's a small group of them that are there pretty regularly, so, and during school hours. So either they're, you know, not going to school when they should or they're not even in school, so.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And then we're in the process of signing the exclusion form that the City of Milwaukee Police Department has, you know, that allows them to trespass people off the property on our behalf.
Well, I think it's important to remember there's two high schools within proximity of the food carts, not just one, so it could be Waldorf also.
The other thing I heard about was rats.
Oh, yeah.
Just recently though?
I don't know why I'm smiling.
Just today.
Because they're everywhere, including the chicken coops and the compo bins and...
But we had, we had a rat issue last fall where all of a sudden they came out of nowhere and I talked to the exterminator because I hired an exterminator and he said that oftentimes when, you know, construction is happening, they'll get disturbed out of one area and so they migrate to another. But we had a lot of reports of rats from the food cart owner. So I hired exterminator that put out bait traps and the exterminator said that, you know, that he thought they were living in the bioswells all around there because they were pretty brushy right to the south there, that one. And then, you know, obviously coming for dinner to the food cart pod. And so I reached out to TriMed and they were just about ready to redo all those anyway, which they have, and they look a lot better. They got rid of a lot of the weeds and stuff in there. And then they had their exterminator place bait, bait traps on their property. So, you know, we haven't, I hadn't had any reports of any rats since then. So if you just heard one today, that's news to me.
Yeah, somebody brought it up spontaneously today.
They had seen one today?
He didn't say he'd seen one today. He said he was there in the last couple of weeks and he saw multiple, well, he said plural rats, not a rat, so, yeah.
Yeah. Well, Richard responded pretty quickly to that last year, so I imagine it's just part of being in an urban environment and just stay on top of it. And TriMed actually, I think, responded also pretty quickly as well.
Yeah, they were very quick and very good about it. And their exterminator called me on a weekly basis to tell me, you know, what the activity was and the activity had died down to nothing. And so, you know, if it's coming back up, I'll check with them and see.
It's spring, they're coming out of their holes.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We did dig up a really big hole right next to the pot. I mean, we, we did. Put a street, what, three feet lower than, so
Yeah, and that's about
There was a lot of displacement happening there with our rat population, I'm sure.
I was going to make an affordable housing
Jantification.
Yeah.
They're everywhere. That's displacement.
Well, an occasional rat is one thing, but, you know, when you're seeing them all the time and they, you know, they had a fairly good population that had moved into that area or came out of hiding or something. And they were pretty bold according to exterminator for them to be out in the daylight hours with people around, so.
Can we stop talking about rats now?
Yeah. Let's end on a high note.
Lisa brought it up.
I did.
Lisa's all
I did. I told the
But I'll reach out to the cart owners and ask them to let me, you shouldn't let me know, which usually I don't have to ask, they let me know, especially about rats because the customers don't like rats either, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's usually, it gets me, it gets a text right away.
Yeah, yeah. Well, hopefully this nice weather that we've been having is doing better for them, you know, than last February, March, you know? It's been a nice sunny, clear stretch, so.
Yeah, they're all optimistic for the coming season because last year was, it was hard on a lot of them with the, the business was way off from the year before. Some of them said like 40% less than the year before and, you know, the construction workers were a good, you know, side bonus, but, you know, overall it was just so hard to even get there, you know, the streets were closed and everything. So now with Axle Tree filling up slowly, you know, that'll be a lot more customers just right there. So I think they all realize that too and they're excited about the farmer's market coming down there. And so they see all these changes and that's why they're sticking in there.
Great.
Alrighty. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So our next item is our climate action plan update with our Public Works Director, Peter Passerelli, and our Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinator, Natalie.
Okay, awesome.
When is your trip to Lincoln County?
That's on the 13th.
Okay.
And it sounds like they reached out to you independently.
Yeah, they did. So I think as of now, my schedule is going to allow me to go, so that'll be good. That'll make three entities that are using our climate action plan for
Yeah. I actually talked to somebody else who was working with staff also from Lincoln County. So they, they're aware that we're meeting with
Cool.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Gamba and council members. I am Peter Passerelli, the Public Works Director, and this, this afternoon also is Natalie Rogers, our Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinator. And we're going to talk a little bit about our, our, our climate action plan, give an update. And in particular, we wanted to focus on the energy component. So we're going to review the carbon accounting calculator that we built and take a look at how, what's the effect of the, being more aggressive on our climate goals? There's, there's a change there. And then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the outreach activities that we're going to be having over the next several months to include a Solarize campaign and a Clean Energy Challenge. And then we have some folks from PGE that will talk a little bit about the, the Clean Energy Challenge.
I just wanted to point out, so this is actually a picture from our community cleanup event and that's Tamara on the left from PGE and we're over at Electric Avenue picking up, picking up some, some waste in our downtown area, which it had to rain because it always rains when I'm involved in an event, but it was, it was very light and it was
What happens if you and Ann are at the same event?
That's what I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm going to test it out. I'm, I'm scared to test it out with Carefree. I mean, it's gambled in August, but if it rains
It would happen.
It would be me.
It'll rain for half an hour, it'll be fine for me.
I bring the green, I bring the plants and the moisture. Okay, yeah, so I'm Natalie, Climate Action Sustainability Coordinator. As Peter mentioned, we're here to talk to you about essentially how does the climate emergency declaration, which accelerated our climate goals, impact our carbon targets? And essentially, what's the gap to close? And how are we going to close that gap to our first 2030 goal? So I updated the figure here with the new carbon target timeline. So by 2030, we want to be net zero carbon from electricity. By 2035, net zero carbon from building energy and 2045, a carbon neutral community. And we're also really trying to add into everything we do that we actually have four kind of timeline targets and the fourth one being our canopy cover goal to 2040. And we've been trying to really integrate that in a lot of the work we're doing, kind of bringing urban forest and climate action together because, as we all know, urban forest has an impact on both the, the cooling and adaptive, adaptation processes that we have as a community for climate change, but then also provides other additional energy efficiency benefits to our Milwaukee homes by, by shading.
I have a logistical question about that last goal. So unfortunately, you don't get to plant a tree and then the next year it's a mature giant tree with a huge canopy.
Mm-hmm.
So given that we have 20 years, is that figuring into the calculation of when we have to have those trees in the ground in order to hit the canopy coverage by 2040?
Well, we haven't done the detailed on how many trees that we have to plant to get that 40%.
And what kind of trees?
So what we have, what we have done is we, we certainly have built some tools to help us along the way. So we, you know, we worked with Vivek Shandis and he put together the, the Branch Out Milwaukee tool that shows us what our canopy is per parcel, what it looks like based off of, I think that was 2014 data. We just recently, Metro just recently flew some new aerial photography that we're, we're going to be doing some LiDAR analysis on and, and see what it looks like in 2019. So we've got that data set and then currently right now in the proposed budget, as we're developing our budget, we've got dollars that we're forecasting to use to do a tree inventory to help us also to provide those, that sort of baseline, that foundation of where we, what it looks like in our community and where the gaps are and where we should focus our efforts. I mean, obviously there's places that everybody can see where the canopy's less and we can plant trees. And then, you know, we are developing a planning program that, that will focus both on, on private and, and public entities.
Yeah, and with that tree inventory, something that, well, once we start knowing what trees are going into the ground, we can start to do projections of, of what that canopy, what the crown diameter will look like. Right now, we don't have that foundational information, so all we do have is those LiDAR photos, essentially, you know, lasers being shot down from an airplane and bouncing back up and telling us what the landscape looks like. I know, no tin foil hats here. But, but, you know, once we start to know actually what species exist within Milwaukee, we can start to under, better estimate what that canopy projection will look like. But then we can also start questioning, you know, are these also climate-adapted species? Because maybe some of these beautiful broad canopies won't look so great in 60 to 100 years, so.
The seeders are already tanking.
Yeah, and so, so part of, part of the work that we need to do, and I think we've been kind of, our goal is to work kind of one by one through these to really work with you guys as well as the community to define the metrics for defining success. So Peter mentioned our carbon accounting calculator and we worked with The Good Company to develop this for our 2035. I like that. Climate action is the Wild West.
There you go.
But, but yeah, so we worked with The Good Company, we worked with them to develop our climate action plan. So they're very familiar with our original carbon targets. We did this originally for our 2035 electricity goal. And this was just to see essentially what are the emissions in a business-as-usual situation where if the City of Milwaukee didn't accelerate, push, didn't do anything extra over the next few years, how close we get to reaching our goal. And this is with things like the state RPS changes, additional energy efficiency improvements provided through our utility partners such as PGE, but then also, you know, the electrification that we're seeing in our community and the increased population growth. And so we brought that to you at a work session prior and we showed that it had about a 33% gap to close, but now we accelerated our carbon goals. The nice about this calculator is also estimates a renewable energy certificate purchase value. We're hoping not to have to purchase anything to, to really meet our goals, but it does provide that information. So where are we with the updated 2030 carbon goals? So we went from a 33% gap to close to a 40% gap to close by accelerating by five years. And once again, this is without the city doing anything extra. This is business as usual. So it's only carbon-free energy accounted, so that's only the, the energy generation types, electricity generation types that do not produce carbon emissions at time of generation. So renewable energy by definition includes things like biomass and biofuels. The City of Milwaukee, we had this conversation with you guys before and we decided that we do not want to count that within our goals simply because when that electricity is created, there is still particulate matter, still greenhouse gas emissions going out into the atmosphere for electricity. And we thought that there were better ways to generate electricity that did not have those outcomes. It also doesn't include local load reduction efforts, so that means trying to conserve electricity more. It doesn't include any efforts to say, besides what Energy Trust of Oregon and PGE can project within their, within their own reports, it doesn't include anything at the city level for us to actually say conserve energy at this time as well as potential demand response. And then this also has a conservative population growth. But you can see at the bottom there, we have a 2018, 2019 But you can see at the bottom there, we have a 2018, 2030. And then, the 2035 scenario was our original projection. But we still have, you know, a 40% gap at about 94 million 500,000 kilowatt hours.
So, this is community-wide?
Community-wide, yes, within the city.
So, this is all of the energy, all of the electricity that businesses and residents in the community use based off of 2018 data? So, we'll get some, we'll get data from 2019 that we'll use to update this calculator as well?
And so, just putting it into maybe a little bit easier to look at form, you can see by accelerating our goals that there's still just some broader gaps, which is to be expected. You know, the Oregon RPS will ramp up. That's the requirement to include more renewable energy inside utility portfolios. Community purchases, so Milwaukee actually has a fairly strong voluntary purchase rate for PGE's renewable energy products. We also, of course, through Green Future Impact as a city, we are at, where we will be purchasing 100% carbon-free electricity. Currently, we're on clean wind, which is another renewable energy product from PGE.
When does that kick in?
2021.
2021.
Being developed.
Yeah, it's like 2021, 2022.
Yeah, so it's going to be starting development, essentially groundbreaking in 2021. But we have our 15-year contract and we'll be learning more. I think they actually, and we have a team of PGE behind me who will happily answer questions. But if I can remember correctly, they had essentially February 1st as a confirmed contract date with the developer for a solar array. Is that right? Nice. And then, you know, we also have existing carbon-free power. We benefit from being the Pacific Northwest through having large portions of hydroelectricity within our electricity mix. We included hydro as a clean energy source as a community. And so, we're including that in our carbon-free electricity goals.
And the large hydro is not part of the state's RPS?
Right.
So, 40% gap to close, that means that there's a 40% buffer that we need to step up to. And we've been doing some work on that already, but there's a lot more to do. So, I know this is a lot of text. I don't expect you to read it all. But pretty much, there's, there's three ways that you can always meet your carbon goals when it comes to electricity and energy. The first base of the pyramid is just conserving. It's the easiest. Don't use as much energy. And then, you have make energy efficient assets and features. If you have to use energy, use it smart. And then, energy source. That's actually selecting, okay, if you have to use energy or you're using it smart, use it from a smart location, too. So, that's the type of energy. So, we're pushing all of these levers to change the outcome to reach our carbon goals. So, starting at the top for the energy source, this one's really important. It has a lot of advocacy at the staff level. So, right now, we're advocating for acceleration of the renewable portfolio standard. You know, we want the state to match our new accelerated carbon goals. We also are participating in Green Future Impact for our own city operations to move to a carbon-free power source. We have discussions with PGE on a community tariff option that would increase participation in a voluntary renewable product. Essentially, it's still, the product is still being in discussion, and we're still working with PGE on it. But essentially, it would be just changing the way that a voluntary renewable model would work from an opt-out to an opt-in, kind of, or from opt-in to opt-out, which increases participation, but still allows flexibility for community members to say, no, this isn't going to work for me. Community solar, so that essentially is when a community can subscribe to a solar array development. This is really beneficial for folks who are in rental properties. They don't have ownership over maybe a roof space. They still want the benefits of solar energy, but instead, they want it on more of a subscription type basis. And then, Solarize 2.0. So, this is a campaign I'll talk about a little bit more in the next slide. But pretty much, it's starting to perform outreach and education and providing some sort of discount on solar arrays for people's residential homes.
What about solar on business? Is anybody reaching out to those nice flat-topped businesses in our industrial areas?
We look at the Google Solar Maps. That's where all the potential is. And it's not in direct conflict with our tree canopy goals. So...
Residential program is.
Yes, so we'll be working with Energy Trust of Oregon as well as Solar Oregon on our own solar campaign. They already performed some outreach to those entities. Businesses can be a really hard case to make for solar, simply because a lot of times, it comes down to a numbers game. And it has to really make an economic, you have to have a financial justification to have a large solar array. And some businesses do it. Walmarts often have large solar arrays on them. They have the space for it. Other businesses don't, maybe it doesn't match their values. Maybe they can't, they don't see the payoff over distance. That's something that we'll be working with Energy Trust and Solar, Solar Oregon on for the campaign itself, but then also a conversation we need to continue into the future.
And I think also, the, the community solar piece, that's really probably the, the model to try to work with businesses because that's, you can build a bigger, a bigger site. You can cite more solar on that rooftop. And you, but you need to, you need to get a project developer to do that. So, we're certainly, I think, we're, right now, we're track, trying to track what, what projects are going online on, on the organs, on Oregon's community solar website. I think there's like an April deadline for community solar projects for people to input the information, developers to, to put them on to the, to the site to show people what's available.
A lot of the, a lot of the businesses in the industrial area are renters, right? They don't own, which has been one of the big problems. I can probably make you a list of 10 renters who would kill to put solar on the roof, but they don't own the roof. At the Net Zero Cities Conference, there was a seminar on a process that I think Washington State was using.
Seattle, yes.
Seattle, where the, the payment for, it was something along these lines. And you probably know it and be able to correct me.
It's the Meats, the Meats program, the metered energy efficiency.
The, the utility basically installs the solar and then basically makes the money back through the normal electrical charges from the businesses. And then, after that, they're making, then the utility's making money. But it's, that way, it never, it's never a cost to the...
To the tenant?
No, to the building owner was more the point. The tenant is paying the normal electrical charges, which covers the...
So, it's, yeah, it's called Meats. It's the metered energy efficiency tariff, I think is, is what that stands for. And we actually had a conversation with PGE about it and also a gentleman that works with the Meats Coalition.
Coalition.
With the intent to continue those discussions. So, the way that that works, it's not generally the utility that installs it, but it's a developer that installs it.
Well, I'm sure it's, but the utility owned it, as I understood it, but no?
No.
Some third party?
It could be the building, the building owner puts it, installs it. And then, he gets, the building owner gets the payback from the energy efficiency, the metered energy efficiency. So, a lot of it's focused originally on building improvements, energy efficiency improvements. So, you know, you're putting in more efficient heating and cooling systems. So, you sort of, it sort of removes that split incentives that, that exists between tenants and landlords on, on energy efficiency.
So, it sounds like it kind of does the same thing. It's a different program, the program that I was, they were talking about.
I think it's the same program because you'd sent the information...
Clear back.
A couple of months ago.
Oh, no, this was like two, three years ago.
But that was, yeah, the email was from, you'd sent the email and said, hey, I went to this conference.
Oh, okay.
It's the same, it's the same.
I had a lot of crap in my head, so God knows.
So, that, that's certainly something that we've been having a discussion with as well. That would, that, that would fit in into that energy efficiency piece.
Okay.
Yes. And so, and so for energy efficiency, there are a lot of programs that we're trying to promote that are offered through either incentives or existing regional partners such as PGE and Energy Trust of Oregon. There's incentives for making your buildings and assets more energy efficient, switching to heat pump water heaters, using smart thermostats, especially as electrification of transportation happens, trying to really dovetail those technologies together around energy efficiency. We also have the Home Energy Score Program that will be starting in October this year. It'll be implemented October 1st. So, that is all about information around energy efficiency. We have our own green building code, which we've been actually getting a lot of good questions about recently. And then, we're also advocating for change to the state building code. So, we're still working with the Zero Energy Ready Oregon Coalition to have a local amendment process working group to figure out how can we, as a community, require building above the state building code in certain situations for energy efficiency and other city goals. And then, also, we're working internally to improve the energy efficiency of our own city assets. So, we have our LED streetlight conversion that we've been working with PGE on. But we're also involved in strategic energy management through Energy Trust of Oregon, which essentially is a lot of Excel datas and charts and technical spreadsheets, which Daniel actually helps us with, with getting a lot of that information. And to help us start tracking and measuring how our buildings are doing and promote energy efficiency within our own buildings.
Question on that. Given that we're buying a new building and we'll be doing some renovation on that new building, are we intending to roll in any energy efficiency upgrades in that process?
We've been doing, I had a conversation with Damian to look at what the systems are currently in place. It looks like more than likely the CIP will capture future improvements, but the systems that are currently in place still have life expectancy in the systems. So, we do not have those built into a budget.
But one of the things we will do is we'll enroll that building in the Strategic Energy Management Program. And that helps us identify places or, or components of the system that we need to make improvements on or tweak the operation, through operations and maintenance of it to, to make sure that we're, we're at the efficiency that those systems are supposed to be operating at.
The one exception to what I said before also is that we'll be doing the renovations on the third floor. So, the lighting that'll be going in, we'll be working with ETO to do a review of that renovation and make sure we're using up-to-date and efficient systems.
And then, the final one, and probably some of the most impactful work, is through energy conservation. So, this is decreasing or shifting our electricity use when possible within the community. So, Smart Grid Testbed is a great program that we're very fortunate to have within the Milwaukee community from PGE, working on educating both residents as well as businesses on the opportunity of shifting electricity use to non-peak times when it's less taxing on the grid. Using adaptive street lighting, like we mentioned before, that actually uses less energy, which provides overall savings and helps us close that gap. We're also doing intern...
I was just going to say, so we, we don't have a whole lot of data yet on the adaptive streetlight control because it was just really installed, it went online probably in December. There's still a couple of modules that they need to put in still as well on some of the newer streetlights. So, there's not a whole lot of information there to look on terms of what the savings is yet.
So, when we, not that there's a lot of this, but when new development occurs, do we control what the streetlights are? Is that a PGE thing? So, I guess I'm, what I'm asking is can we cause all new, you know...
LEDs to go in?
Well, LEDs, I think we're getting pretty close to being switched out, if I'm recalling correctly, in Milwaukee. But the adaptive ones that are, you know, motion...
The ones that are on Main Street where we're actually, we have like domain capabilities and those types of systems, I believe that we are training staff, so we'll have some control over that, but they'll still be managed by PGE.
Right, I guess what I'm wondering about is the standards. Who decides what goes into a new development?
So, that would be in our, that's part of our public work standards. So, we actually have that opportunity to identify new and improved products that relate to street lighting and, and other things as well, so...
And then, finally, we're doing internal and external outreach just around best practices when it comes to energy conservation in both the home and the workplace. I just actually went to a strategic energy management meeting with Damian on how to perform outreach for our own internal operations and how to talk to Milwaukee staff about how to conserve energy at the desk as well as out in the field. And I think we can extend some of those learnings to other businesses within the community. And then, also, once again, we're really benefiting from a lot of the outreach and the workshops through Smart Grid Testbed. That'll be happening. I know Tamara's been having conversations with Community Energy Project on weatherization workshops, in particular for, for low-income tenants and residents in Milwaukee, which I think is fantastic. And we're very fortunate. But I did want to say, so something that's really exciting, which our friend Warren from PG will talk to you guys more about, is we're actually going to be leading a campaign in the next few months and, which ties in all three of the tiers of the pyramid, essentially going from energy source, talking about renewables, down to energy efficiency and also tying in Smart Grid Testbed learnings. And so, we have an opportunity of, of having this whole message essentially presented to the community through the lens of to meet our climate goals, which is a fantastic opportunity. And we really look forward to seeing how this works. But I will leave that juicy detail to Warren to talk to you about. But I did want to talk to you about Solarize 2.0 because I know this has been something that, you know, we've been teasing and there's been a lot of questions about. And so, Peter and I went to a workshop at Energy Trust of Oregon to learn more about what it's going to look like. Right now, there are three communities that are going to be doing a Solarize 2.0 campaign in the next few months. That's Milwaukee, Hillsborough, and Hood River, which I think is actually a really great mix because I think Milwaukee is almost like in between Hillsborough and Hood River when it comes to some community aspects and kind of opinion around climate. So, Solarize 2.0, just to remind ourselves, is kind of a regional effort to promote residential rooftop solar installations, but they also are extending these to commercial as well. It's just, I think, they're focusing primarily on, on residential rooftops for some of the workshops we'll be working with them on. And then, they'll do some maybe more targeted outreach. There's going to be an early summer through fall timeline. So, I'll show you a little slide really quickly dealing with a few, both the campaign Warren will be talking to you about, an energy campaign as well as Solarize 2.0. So, you can see kind of some of that overlap of outreach that will be happening over the next year. And so, what this Solarize will do, so Solarize 1.0, so in 2017, that essentially leveraged bulk purchasing of solar arrays with a few contractors to, to provide a discount to Milwaukee residents. That ended up being pretty complicated. And so, this time, what's going to happen instead is Energy Trust of Oregon will be working with a few contractors who agree, they'll go through their own contract, their own process to select those contractors, who will agree to provide these solar arrays at a discounted rate. And that makes things a lot simpler, especially when doing estimations of costs. So, they're going to be working through selected contractors and providing these available incentives. And I provided you an example of one thing, one example that we talked about within that Energy Trust of Oregon workshop, but I just want to emphasize that, you know, these aren't rigid numbers. I'm not 100% sure this is what the cost is going to be. But, you know, roughly, if a solar, six KW solar arrays around 20,000, essentially through the variety of incentives, both through the Solarize 2.0 campaign as well as educating potential solar homeowners on other incentives that already exist through state and federal credits, can end up around 2,500. So, a pretty significant discount when it comes to solar.
Twelve thousand...
Sorry, sorry, sorry. 12,500. Yeah, I wish. But, but I do want to say that they, they also projected it to be even less for, there's special low-income incentives as well. And so, that actually ended up being closer to the 6,000 range, if I remember right, in that workshop.
I think it was actually about a third of the cost of, of that for, for the low-income?
Yeah, so it was a pretty deep discount. Now, that is one thing we did talk to Solar Oregon and Energy Trust of Oregon about, which is, you know, we also want information about all the other energy conservation, energy efficiency incentives to be conveyed to residents because, you know, even if it's $6,000, that's a lot of money. And there might be some more valuable energy efficiency improvements that could be made with those... could be made with those dollars. And so Home Energy Score is one way that you can start to look at some of those projections. It's $150 to get an assessment. But then also, you know, there's, I put in free, other incentives. For example, if you participate in Smart Grid Testbed, if you get a smart thermostat, you know, if you look at weatherization techniques, if you attend a CEP weatherization workshop. So we want everything to be linked together. There's a lot of information that's gonna be coming out over this year. We want to make sure it's all bridged, so that way people can make the best decision. Solarize might be the best decision, depending on the homeowner and the homeowner values. So Solar Oregon is gonna be essentially the community outreach lead, helping organize some of these events and workshops. And there're gonna be informational workshops on all of the variety of topics we've mentioned, but then also including in other technology such as storage, energy storage, and EVs. And that's actually a change from the last Solarize campaign, where it's focused primarily on the arrays themselves. Now they're really gonna be talking about storage as well, because that's entered into the conversation.
Storage come down in price?
You know, I am not sure. And I think they were still trying to figure out how the contractor discount would work, because usually it's not, you know, per kilowatt, it's like per unit. But that's something that the Energy Trust of Oregon is working with the contractors to figure out a price on. And then you can see the different kind of roles that they've outlined. This is provided through Spark Northwest was kind of the trainer for this workshop, and they're also gonna be giving some outreach materials to ETO, Solar Oregon, and ourselves. But then also, you know, the Solar Oregon is really the one primarily taking the lead, but we'll be holding these workshops within Milwaukee. We are gonna be opening up the workshops, so if folks in Oak Grove want to attend a workshop, if folks in Southeast Portland who happen to be getting this Milwaukee information, they're welcome to attend, so it's not gonna be an exclusive event by any means. So I've been teasing this city energy challenge. I really want Warren to talk more about it, but I just wanted, I've been talking about a lot of outreach that's gonna be happening, and it can kind of get confusing. So I just kind of made this little timeline for you, so you can start to see kind of where things are weaving in. So this is an example timeline that we got from Energy Trust of Oregon and Solar Oregon. Things could shift roughly, but pretty much we're looking at doing a lot of planning over the next few months with outreach really happening in the summer. And that's because that's when a lot of people are actually thinking about solar, is when the sun is shining. And then our contractors are gonna be doing site assessments and installations, and then we'll probably do a celebration of some sort at the end with a registration cutoff date. And that's just because sometimes if you have a cutoff date, it kind of lights a fire under some people's pants and you want to actually get things done. They made a really good point, talking about, a lot of people think about solar, but it could be three years down the road when an array is actually on a rooftop, because life gets in the way. And so this kind of provides that way of kind of like putting a timeline on it. And then for our city energy challenge, it's going to probably kick off sooner than the Solarize campaign, and so it'll be really nice, because by the time that our energy challenge is kind of starting to come to a close, people can still participate and take action through Solarize. So I think it will match and align really well. And as, pretty much, that's what we came to present to you guys. I know there's a few other things that we talked about in the staff report. One thing that we've been talking about is potentially drafting an MOU with PGE in there. We've talked to them about it as well, just to formalize the commitment that both of our parties have to reach our climate goals. And then also, we continue to do outreach for a suite of other climate actions, which will be kind of tied into some of these campaigns as well, beyond energy. And yeah, and I think that it's gonna be a very full summer. You'll pretty much see me at almost every farmer's market event, it seems like, which is my own doing. I always sign up for those. I need more hazelnut shells, that's my thing. But anyways, but yeah, so if you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to hear them.
Oh, my gosh.
I've been asking as we go.
My biggest question was about when are we gonna do the commercial solar 1.0, because I think that really is-
It's a huge opportunity.
That's really, I mean, you know, I mean, unless we're talking about the 10,000 square foot lots, you know, as the only viable options. I mean, the residential program, you know, I've got, right now, my house is great. My neighbor plants a tree, it's gone.
Right. Sure.
And Peter mentioned community solar. So we've actually, we had some discussions with Bonneville Environmental Foundation, we've had other discussions with Community Energy Project and Energy Trust of Oregon about community solar. And from our understanding, how the model can work is you, as a business, can host a community solar site, say, hey, I don't want anything to do with managing these subscriptions, I just want to essentially make back the money from leasing my roof space. And then a developer can come in, put in a solar array, and actually work with community residents to actually have that subscription model. I think, you know, as Peter mentioned, April is when we're actually gonna start seeing what developers are proposing within the region. And our job as a community, I think, is to really promote, whenever somebody does something within Milwaukee, we're gonna be saying, hey, you guys can sign up for this option. Based on our initial discussions, I know Bonneville Environmental Foundation was really interested in helping projects that are, they called it Walmart size, you know, so large rooftops. And so that is an interest for people who want to host sites. It's really just, I think, overcoming that hurdle of fear from the business owners around liability, but then also showing how this model could benefit them, because you're right, these really large rooftop scale arrays are gonna be where the cost savings are for subscribers, you know. And in Oregon in particular, it's gonna be quantity is really what we need, because we can, solar panels are pretty dang efficient now. I mean, they're getting more and more efficient each day, it feels like, but we benefit from the number of arrays here in more of a cloudy state. So we need those commercial rooftop spaces, so we will be, you know, continually to talk to Solar Oregon and Energy Trust of Oregon to push that, but then we're also hoping to promote these community solar projects as they arise in Milwaukee.
So to that question about cost to consumers and the fact that we have a 40% gap to meet, I'm concerned that we need to think creatively, early as possible, about how we can deliver the best carbon reduction at the most cost-effective level. And I question whether or not we can do that in Milwaukee, in Oregon? Do we need to be thinking about community solar that's in a super sunny spot in the country?
The way they designed the community solar thing, it has to be within our territory, PGE's territory.
Within PGE's territory.
And I don't think you guys have anything on the sunny side of the mountains, do you?
No.
And then you've got the communities-
Can you fix that?
And then you've got the land use fights that are happening out in the sunny parts of the country, where they're actually trying to prevent people from putting in solar arrays, you know, because-
Well, and that's why we see working-
I mean, what can we do here in the city of Milwaukee? We're not gonna, I mean, we can't really leverage a whole lot across state lines, across city lines, you know, but what kind of, how do we incentivize the opportunities we have?
We really have not had discussions with the large industrial property owners about using space. We just haven't prioritized that yet. I mean, we've been focusing on more of the residential side at this point and getting, trying to grow participation in those products that PG already offers. Sort of those are those low-hanging fruits for us, and we haven't, we just haven't gone out there to do that yet.
And if you think there are the developer side of this out there, I mean, maybe it's as simple as, I mean, maybe it's worth at least trying something as simple as, you know, we know we have a good database of email addresses for North Industrial because of the NMIA process, right? Alma Community Development should have a good list and just put it out there that, hey, you know, here's this program, and Milwaukee's interested. Anybody there interested? You know, just, you know, I don't know what kind of regular outreach we do to the businesses, but I think there's, not only on this score, but on other scores, we should be doing more, probably, regular outreach, not just hitting them up for their business taxes once a year.
Well, and the Downtown Milwaukee Business Association has sort of got a bit of a new lease on life. They had great attendance at their meeting last Friday, and I know there is some interest in that group in forming some connections to the North Industrial District and to Bob's Red Mill territory. So maybe we've got some opportunities there to have it be, if we can build our connection with that connection to the business community, then maybe we can have businesses talking to businesses about how great it is, not just the city saying, this would be a nice thing if you're interested.
And what carrots, what carrots can we put in there? I mean, we haven't had a conversation about, you know, what the city's role might be in incentivizing some, you know, community solar and industrial development project nexus. I mean, I think to me, that's where the real-
Those are good conversations to have, and we do need to, as Peter mentions, we have been focusing a lot on, I mean, our climate action plan is a little over a year old. And so we've been focusing a lot on general awareness and Milwaukee resident awareness in particular. And we do need to increase the amount of outreach that we're doing to our business and commercial, commercial residents, really, within Milwaukee. But I will say, for the small staff that we do have, the whole bang-for-all-buck thing, we've been working very closely with PGE, and PGE has been doing a great job on actually where we're sourcing this energy from, because Milwaukee doesn't, I mean, our solar rooftop capacity by no means matches the availability of resources that, at a utility scale, we can take advantage of. And really working on the utility scale to decarbonize the grid, I think is gonna provide the most cost-effective means to reach our carbon goals than community solar or rooftop solar does, simply because, I mean, think of all the touchpoints, even for somebody who's interested in a solar array to have on their home. It takes a lot of work to really step them through that process, because it's complicated, you know? And community solar's complicated. I don't know how many meetings we sat through to try to fully understand it. But PGE has us down to a science when it comes to electricity generation. So we are very fortunate to have a great partnership with them to actually decarbonize the grid on their end, because then the benefits Milwaukee residents get, when they turn on their light switch, they might not even know that they're eventually gonna be at 100% carbon-free electricity, and that's, I really look forward to that.
They just need to build more solar and wind.
That's pretty much my conversation every time I see Dave or Maria.
And put it all underground.
You had to bring that up, didn't you, Peter?
You absolutely are spending your time in the right place, and this is so critical, and I'm really grateful that we've had such a great response from PGE to this. And these conversations are so important for not just Milwaukee, but for Oregon and for the world. So as much as I'm excited about and interested in the prospect of all of these other things, stay the course.
Awesome.
Yeah, you guys are doing great, really seriously.
That's great to hear. And at that note, I do want to bring up Warren to talk more about the city energy challenge, I'm gonna call it for now, but I'm gonna let you steer the ship, actually.
Sounds good.
Got it.
All right. Good evening. I'm Warren Parker III, and I am in PG's product marketing team. I run our voluntary renewable program. And so I'm here to talk about the exciting city challenges. Of course, previously, we've done green power challenges, really focused on the voluntary renewable program and the EPA green power community designation that comes along with that, and the usually signing up for the CNI Clean Wind program, or an increase in participation in CNI Clean Wind. So we've got kind of a long history here with green power challenges, but now we're trying to take them to the next level, and how do we really come together to really get to this future of Oregon that we're all striving for? So what is this challenge, right? And the way that we're really seeing this challenge play out is that it's in support of Milwaukee and getting you all to this flourishing, sustainable, carbon-free future by 2045 as a full community. And so we see this as a great opportunity and is exciting. The community is already very engaged in this work, and so how do we give them those actionable things to work towards? And so kind of to that of how do we get there, it is about engaging and uniting the community toward those climate goals in an equitable and inclusive form or fashion of just making sure that people are all feeling like they are a part of this, that it's not just one person, or that it's all on them, that it's, we're all together. And doing some acceleration on awareness and participation on those actionable initiatives, so giving them not just, here's the climate action plan, and I think that what's great is that there's already a lot of layout in that of what can I do in my home or in my business, but really like guiding them through all of that. And then we're gonna use the intelligent insights and the innovative technology to proactively combat the climate emergency that we're in. So with all of that comes these city energy challenges to be named, but the city energy challenges. And it is going to be kind of a phased approach here over the next two years. So starting in 2020 on Earth Day, we'll kick off a nine-week campaign that will be more of, I kind of keep calling this community warming around this, of how do we get the community to be aware that the Climate Action Plan exists, and getting them to start engaging with the Climate Action Plan, getting that low-hanging fruit, right, of the voluntary renewable program that's just a signup, I don't need to install anything in my home. Milwaukee already has great participation in that program. It's like just under 30%, so you're almost there. And so I think we have already some great engagement on that, so how do we get further on that? So it'll be a very digital campaign, this first round of driving to a landing page that is focused on the Climate Action Plan and the different steps that the community can take, whether it's through us, or at the city, or the Energy Trust, or the recycling, or water. So just kind of tying all of those things together in one easy-to-digest landing page that also has some sort of a community action pledge. So what are the things that, like, I can do, and then like, I'm on board, and signing that pledge as well. We'll also be showing up at the community events throughout the city, so leaning in on those events that are already happening, and how can we show up as PGE, or the city, or the Energy Trust altogether? And then also, I think this is kind of the cool thing of finding volunteer activities as well to engage the community employees and the community-based organizations to come together. Again, like, I keep also focusing on the fact that, like, this isn't, like, it can feel very overwhelming, all of this climate action, and what do I need to do? And so it isn't just you, it's, we're all in this together. So how can we continue to show up together, so that the community knows, like, we're all here for you? And so, as I said, we'll start with kind of this, the low-hanging fruit of our voluntary renewable program, and then move into energy efficiency and energy shifting through the demand response programs, like smart thermostats or the smart water heaters, and so looking at those different things and where it makes sense, and then leaning into a little bit of the transportation electrification, what already exists, right? That you have the Max Line that's here and is a electric mode of transportation, but maybe they don't see transportation electrification as something that they can participate in, because I'm a renter, and so I don't have a charging station in my apartment. And so how do we tie all of this together?
Unless you happen to be a renter at Waverly Greens, where they will put in charging stations, and they'll help you rent an electric car, too.
Oh, there you go.
Plug. Don't have them yet.
I think it's starting to happen. Yeah, I don't, I don't live there anymore, so I don't have a touch.
So this is kind of that first year, and then in 2021, we would come back, because we also don't want this to be like a, we're here for nine weeks, and then we're having these great conversations and great actions around the Climate Action Plan, and then we're just gone. So we want to come back. We'll also continue to have stuff happening with Smart Grid Testbed. You'll have the ETO Solarize campaign happening, and so all of this is tying together and leading in, leaning in with each other. Come back in 2021 with- We'll also continue to have stuff happening with smart grid test bed. You'll have the ETO Solarize campaign happening. And so all of this is tying together and leading in, leaning in with each other. Come back in 2021 with some continued outreach and engagement. And then also pulling in youth into this conversation. We know that they're big influencers in all of this because they're really seeing that they have the most to lose if we don't do something. So how do we engage with them and bring them along on that journey as well? But just given the timeline, we were like, we'll come back to that in 2021. So I think this is kind of where we can see your call to action as well, is that just continue to lead the way and be active and engaged advocates for the climate action plan and all of that great work. And I think like there's a really great opportunity here with storytelling. Of course, this is the product marketer in me, like saying that like storytelling is really important and that's what gets people to move and see those everyday actions that they can take. So looking at what are the awesome things that you're doing at home or what is the city itself doing to drive that sustainable innovation? And then just overarching all of this is the partnership of all of these organizations coming together and how is that story being told as well? So together we can deliver on a future that we can all count on. So that is the city energy challenge at a high level for you all this evening.
I have a question. So engaging people, you know, one of the things I think can be fun about, you know, measuring your, you know, not just like demonstrating like, you know, what counselors are doing to, you know, but also sort of tools that folks can use themselves to measure their own carbon footprint, you know, during like the bike commute month challenge or whatever, you know, you can sort of like, you know, log, you know, how much CO2 you've prevented from going into the atmosphere. Is there any thinking around that sort of gaming, you know, gamification, you know, of the challenge to let people sort of like measure their own?
Yeah, I do think that we have been looking at that for 2021, especially because at that point, we'll have a lot more around EV charging programs at PGE. So we'll have the residential program up and running. And so how can you gamify? Because also as a millennial, I will tell you gamification works and like I always am participating when I can. So yeah, looking at gamification and having that dashboard to see how am I doing? How are my neighbors doing? How is the community as a whole doing? And so seeing that impact. And then also as we build in other cities, as they're doing that, then how does this hall come together, right, of like the full service territory?
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned like riding them, you know, riding the train or, you know, riding your bike or walking or, you know, ways for people to sort of like, you know, give themselves a little pat on the back and also challenge Hillsborough to do a little bit more.
Yeah. And, and Warren, I mean, we've had a lot of conversations, but we actually had a really great workshop about it, but that whole landing page where it's kind of like an overarching, this is why we're doing this climate action and these measurable actionable steps underneath it. I mean, we almost see that as like a checklist of like what ones can you do already and then how close are you? Maybe how far, how much further can you take this? I know when it comes to data, especially on PGE's end, they're not as nimble as we hope they can be because you guys have so much and so many systems you have to work through to present this information. But I know that this is something that they've been working on is, is giving these like community numbers and putting it into something. I think you guys, Leslie was mentioning that you guys already have a way to equate it to understandable instead of it's just like kilowatt hours. It's actually like, this is the equivalent of X amount of miles or something.
Yeah, we use the EPA calculator for all of that. So if you are a voluntary renewable customer, you get our annual CO2 impact statement of you purchased this many kilowatt hours, which is the same as. And so, yeah, we are using that. I think some of those early things too that we talked about for this challenge is even just like a social icon, right? Where it's like, I've signed the pledge because people like that, like some sort of acknowledgement on social, whether it's Facebook or Instagram. And then tagging your friends and getting them to join the challenge. We've talked about with renewables, we've got another separate, bigger campaign around referring friends because that's also word of mouth is big in all of this. And I think that this is like, that's where you lean in on the city challenge and engaging the community.
And as we've talked about before, energy efficiency and the work that you do in your home is very hard to see. And so having some sort of either informational handout like Home Energy Score or, or having some sort of sign, you know, like I, I was talking to PGA saying that I'm participating in the backyard habitat program, but that my front yard is just a pit of mulch right now. It looks horrible, but I have a nice little sign I can stick in here saying, hey, this is a work in progress. I'm working towards this. Don't judge me. But having, yeah, recognition, especially on something, I mean, we all do good for our own values, but at the same time, if we see everyone else in the community contributing to those values and doing good, I think that is a motivator as well.
I'm hoping that there's something that's going to happen at the library, which is one of our great examples of how the city is putting this into action and is a fantastic place to meet residents of all ages and get to those younger folks and, yeah.
I actually, on my calendar, have a reminder, talk to Katie about energy efficiency sign at library for this week. But, so we're also, we're, are looking at signage, at least for awareness of the improvements that we're doing at the letting library, but then the library has come up as a great venue for all of the workshops of all of the campaigns that we've mentioned. I know we've definitely mentioned it for this campaign as well and challenge as a place to bring people together. Great. Great. Well, everyone stay tuned. I feel bad because I'm not a very active social media user, but stay tuned on social media because you'll be seeing, I'm looking at you, Cameron, because you'll be seeing a whole lot coming around energy and ways that you can contribute to climate action within Milwaukee. And so this will be a very active year and a lot of change. It's great.
Will we get a summary report from you at some point, Warren, on how it all went?
Yeah, I think that I plan on sharing frequently throughout the challenge to Natalie, and then we will come back at the end of the challenge and present to council on how it went.
And are we like competing with the other cities? Is that why it's a challenge?
You're actually taking the, the lead here. This is the first city that we're taking on a new challenge.
Oh, okay. You named three cities.
So that Solarize has three.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah. So I see how it starts to layer and get a little complicated. We're flying so low. I mean, of course we have PGE to help us, the wind under our wings, but, but we're, we're taking the lead on this one. And then we're going to be a role model for other communities in the region.
Nice.
It's a privilege.
Yeah. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Super exciting.
Interesting things going on.
All right. With that, we will adjourn the work session. We'll be back here at six o'clock.